Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Cutler?
Here.
Chairman Henry?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
This time staff, are there any items to add or remove from the agenda? Having motion to approve the agenda as is?
So moved. Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes of the hour?
Aye.
Now we have two sets of minutes, one from July 2nd and July 16th. All had a chance to review them, and they got a motion to approve.
Make a motion. Second.
All in favor of approving the July 2nd and July 16th minutes of the hour?
Aye.
We have a presentation, ladies and gentlemen.
Presentation from ACCG?
Yes.
Okay.
Joe Dan?
Yeah.
Why they want to throw this ball? Someone mess up in the picture?
I'm sorry.
At this moment, I'll just like, okay?
Chairman Stevens, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Joe Dan Thompson, the marketing and field service representative for the ACCG insurance programs. And I've heard a talk about the insurance workers' compensation tonight and the counties' membership in that program. Workers' compensation program started way back in 1982 with 11 counties. Today, we have 135 counties and several authorities. It involves 172 members, and 135 counties represent 85 percent of the state of Georgia. One of the things that sets us aside from your typical insurance company is the fact that we give a dividend back to our membership. We've been doing that since 1985, and those dividends back to our membership exceeds $82.7 million. Given the fact that Caduce County's been in the program since 1989, you receive a dividend every year since 1996, going by $15,721 dollars. That's a form of a premium credit on the workers' compensation coverage. 2016, ACCG did a special cash dividend of $5 million. Caduce County's portion of that was $58,647. In March of this year, we did another $6 million cash dividend. Four and a half, sorry, $6 million dividend, four and a half million cash, 1.5 in safety grants over the next three years. This year, your special dividend for 2019 was $54,458. As far as the safety grant, the county was eligible for a $75,000 grant application was filled out, processed, a few weeks after all the checks to Alicia. But tonight, I wanted to do a oral presentation, and I've got the big check looking for $7,475, I believe the county purchased some AED equipment with that. But taking all those numbers into consideration, ACCG has given Caduce County back more than $1,360,000. And I've got the check I'd like to present to you, and if you want to take a picture, I'm happy to do that. But that concludes my comments, and I'll open it up for any questions that would be in order to happen. I appreciate you guys being in our program. Appreciate you looking. Yes, sir.
Now we'll run off on that for appearances, we don't have to speak. Now moving on. Administrative fiscal matters, which you want. For those who have cases in contract with the Bureau of Superior, who can do your right.
This is, this is actually for the Superior, for the Clerk of Superior Court. Currently, we have a contract with Court Collections Bureau to collect funds on unpaid traffic citations in state court. Court Collections Bureau has been acquired by Purdue Brandon. Purdue Brandon is a law firm and not a collections bureau, which requires them to have a contract with the Clerk of Superior Court ratified by the Board. So we're just asking that you ratify the contract. They do have a 30 percent charge, but that gets passed on to the defendant. So there's not a cost to the county for the contract. And we have actually seen collections go up because of this, so they're doing a really good job for us.
Second. Do we have any questions? Are you guys anything to add? I pray I'm a celebrity here today.
They are doing a really good, a really good job collecting, and it's increased revenue for sure. I didn't do it for the first year and a half, not sure whether I wanted to venture out, but it really has proved they're reaching out and getting people to pay the tickets, so it's been a benefit for sure.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here. There's no other questions? Any votes, all in favor of approving the hour?
Aye.
Thank you, and you got the next?
I do, I believe you should have a resolution that basically gives me, as county manager, permission to create a complete county committee for the 2020 census. This, the purpose of the committee will basically be to go out into the community and to help us reach groups of citizens that may have a difficult time filling out the census. There's a, there's a big change in the census this year, so a lot, a lot of people will be asked to fill out on the Internet, and so we realized that that could be a challenge for some of our citizens. So this committee will put together different citizens and people within the community that could help us reach this group of citizens.
Now a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Do we have any questions? All in favor of approving the hour?
Aye.
Ms. Anne James? Propose amendment to be served, President, under number one, please.
Before we get started on this, I just wanted to let y'all know that the check that y'all just received, we had a goal to get AEDs in almost every department in the county. And so we had done that with some county money previously, but when the opportunity came for the grant, Marie already filled out the grant, and obviously we did approve for it. So I just wanted to say that is part of the HR program, and also that, oh, you know, she's not here to say thank you to Marie for giving us that grant, and what we did do with it is did our third phase of the AED program. So we're almost, we have one more phase left, so almost every department had AEDs in the process. So that's all that's left. So what I'm here to present first is we have entered, obviously in agreement with one-to-one, to provide clinic services to the employees of Caduce County and Fort Olaford, the city of Fort Olaford. And in doing that, when we added Fort Olaford, it has increased the need for more hours, and also what we were suffering a little bit with is being able to help people walk in. When they were sick, being able to walk in because our appointments were so full. So in, in order to do that, we have expanded the hours so we can, you know, number one, have more appointments, but number two, try to accommodate walk-ins on a more frequent basis, and that's what we have to do. So that was that, so it incre, that's what it did there, annual increases of clinic staff about to 3%. So that way, it's automatically in there, we don't have to look at it every year. Staff salaries will be a pass-through cost, actual hours worked, so it's not a fixed cost, a pass-through cost. We added the walk-in hours, and it was a, the last thing, it was important to us to be able to offer them more walk-in hours, or walk-in opportunities for city people, okay, so that's, that's that.
Do we have a motion to approve? One of the reasons why we're thinking about it, we've got more than.
Yes, it's. It's been a huge success.
Any questions?
Well, and we also get reimbursed by Fort Olaford.
Yes, yes, so Fort Olaford will pay 20 percent of anything that comes through, except for they actually pay their pass-through costs, which would be prescriptions or labs and stuff like that.
Thank you. All in favor of the hour?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you have any, you got one more?
I have two more.
Two more?
Yeah. So the next one is, Joan Anne's right to left, but the next one is our, our workers' comp fund. So basically, what we did is if we, through safety, if we do, from every department, we go quarterly, we have a safety meeting, and every department sends us anything that needs to be done in that department, and we give them flyers on how to be more safe, and they get all that back to us, and we keep it, and we get audited every quarter to make sure that we have that done. And if we have that done, at the end of every year, they give us a discount. So this year, our discount, or reduction in our actual premiums for this one, is $27,101.
All in favor of the hour?
Aye.
Welcome. And then the last one is our actual contract with Cigna Health. Now, we approved changing our health provider, but we've not signed a contract to do that, so this is the actual contract with Cigna Health.
Do we have a motion to approve on reference to Cigna Health?
So moved.
Second. Second, comments? All in favor of the approval, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for our hard work too. James Jordan, nice to have you back in town, Chris. How's it feel to be back?
Uh, quite a long. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here to present to you the contract between Caduce County Transit and the Transaliance Group. If you guys, all probably are aware, Caduce County Transit is not charged with bear, so any money we can get to help offset the costs to the county is something to go after and pursue. 50 percent of our operating costs, both operationally administrative, we come through, 5311 grant the federal transit authority provides to us, so that offsets about half the, half of the cost. The other bid that we generally go with is the Transaliance Group, they're subcontracted through the Department of Human Services. We get used to transport mostly seniors to the senior center, to the nutrition centers, they call it, so they can have a meal every day. It's a good service for, for them, because we're providing the transportation, the Department of Human Services, through Transaliance Group compensates us for $6 per trip, so if we bring a senior into the center, that's $6, and we take him home, that's another $6. This year, the 2020 contract that Transaliance Group is estimating will recruit about $42,789.75, based on their estimates from previous performance, and it's, it goes into effect, it went into effect, I don't understand how they did this, but went into effect July 1st. They send it out July 10th, and they're also before the Board for approval.
Do we have a motion to approve? Make a motion? All in favor of the approval, say aye?
Aye.
Chief Kim?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Come to you tonight to ask for approval to purchase fire apparatus. We ran across a really good deal. That apparatus sells normally for $4.09. It's a demo model that they use to show other departments and what the department, what the truck would look like. And so they offered a pretty good price on it. It's got 4,600 miles, and it's, some of the features of it, it's 1,500 gallon pump, 500 gallon fuselage. The body is stainless steel, which makes it worth even a little more. Most of the trucks are aluminum or galvanized steel, so the stainless steel definitely has longer longevity to it. But the truck has been priced at $358,600, and it's from Triton ERV Emergency Company. The engine that we're replacing would be Engine 1, which currently has 101,000 miles, but more than what we really look at in the fire service, just the hours, because a lot of times the apparatus responds and it just sits there, pumps, or it's on a call for a couple of hours or a wreck. And so it has 7,069, 7,069 hours on it, which if you calculate it in diesel engine times 60, that's equivalent, that motor's equivalent to having 424,000 miles on it. So it's a 2008 model, and so we're going to take that apparatus if you approve the purchase tonight, and use it for training, so we're not using so many miles on the, on the newer trucks. This will come out of the 2014 splotch, and vehicles and equipment, and what's left in the 2014 splotch is $977,414.
Do we have a motion to approve this, President?
So moved.
I'll second. Do we have any questions?
Chief, what station was this behouse at?
Station 1, I'm sorry, did you have the regular fire station?
No, you move it around, it would be perfectly there.
It would be perfectly there. All our other stations, we, we've got, had with equipment that each house now, and you might use the station one that you're replacing at those, or are you supposed to, are you training? Well, I use them, the one here for training, but pretty, I mean, we just recently, two years ago, bought the tanker pumpers, both of those, and then squads for medical calls. We still have our engines, or, you know, six engines that are starting to show some age, they all 2008. But we'd really like to get one this year, and wait a year, buy another one, maybe a year, buy another, kind of space it out a little bit, because the dilemma we've run into is that everything's aging at the same time. And so our ladders are getting up in years too, they're, you know, once 95, so those are things we'll have to look at, and those are things that are allocated in 2019 splotch to replace. So once that splotch comes, that cycle, five years should be, I mean, we're staying in really good shape. As well as being the one standard you're looking at, sir, you know, it's typically 10 years, and it's what they recommend, somewhere between eight and 10. Refurbish the apparatus and keep it in reserve for another four or five. But 10 to 15 years, a lot depends on, on the use of the apparatus, how much use it receives.
Do you have a question? Unless we find that wrong.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Professor Cutler?
Yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just take a moment, please, our kind of a vast new fire department. Last month, we've officially licensed five of our rescue squads to basic life support, and so they're carrying IV drugs and some, some drugs, but what it allows us to do is augment the EMS service and respond to calls and have more equipment availability, or more of some type of, and it could just be single use also, but, but we're very excited about it. All our firefighters are DNTBs, we have ENT advanced class coming up, but we really are doing skills that, now we have the AED, advanced airway management, force O2, control bleeding, and now with IV fluids and some of the drugs like E50 and other things that we're allowed to do, can definitely make a difference in somebody's life. So the next unit we're working against, Station 4 in Keith Community, licensed, is a basic life support unit. And so we've been typically just kind of first responders, and taking that next step to basic life support is, is a real thing for us. I'm very excited about it.
Please add to your, your ladies, too. Carol?
Oh, I think it's Rachel.
Oh, Rachel, that's you, I'm sorry. I said Carol. Now I'm in, that's you.
So I'm here for the resolution to open a new bank account, first thing. This one's a little bit different. Caduce County has been selected as a recipient of a One Georgia Special Purpose Award from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. The award amount is for $100,000, and there is no max requirement. The funds are budgeted for the construction of an agricultural education center for Heritage High School. The county will act as the fiscal agent for the award. In order to draw the funds down, a non-interest receiving bank account must be opened and used exclusively for this award. And due to award timing constraints and birthright policies, approval of the bank account is needed ahead of the Board of Commissioners' acceptance of the award. However, the use of the bank account is contingent on the Board of Commissioners' acceptance.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve? I second.
Any questions? All in favor of opening this against that?
Aye.
Thank you.
So my first item, Commissioners, is the fiscal year 2020 budget. I'm pleased to present it to you, you should have a copy of it in front of you. This is collective input from all the departments, the constitutional officers, the elected officials. We all got together, put some blood, sweat, and tears, just a few tears, into the budget process. We had term meetings, and then of course later, we had the budget workshops, the work sessions that were public meetings, and now that is all culminated into the proposed budget that you have in front of you. The proposed, so the budget is made, is by state law, we have to have a balanced budget, and by, which is in front of you. And by state law, you have to have a budget for the general fund of the county, or all the special revenue funds of the county, with the capital projects funds of the county. We also include in our budget the enterprise funds of the county, that's not required by state law, but we do present that as well. So that's all in front of you. Certainly, the general fund is the largest fund of the county. General fund is proposed at $28,523,706. And this is a $1.5 billion increase over last year's budget, about 5.5 percent. I want to point out that about 47 percent of the budget comes from general property taxes. The majority of that, only about 13 percent of that, comes from TADT, that rate is set by the state. The rest of that is really driven by the military. And you gentlemen have proposed to establish a military rate of 6.484 percent. This is less than the rollback rate, and it's also 0.25 mils less than the current military rate of 6.734 percent. So the proposed budget will be on, that you have in front of you is also going to be on the website in PDF format for the public, that will be on there tomorrow. We already have a hard copy in the front office here at the Avenue Building for the public to view during normal business hours. We have a summary version in the breezeway in the, on the bulletin board, and tomorrow, there will also be a hard copy over at the courthouse at the Babel State. And the, the website is www.caduce.com. And moving forward, there'll be a public hearing that's required by state law next Monday at 5:30 here in the chambers, and then at the next regularly scheduled BRC meeting, you all will hopefully adopt the budget along with the military.
Do we have a motion to accept? CM wants to make a motion. Is that all good? We'll move on to the final.
Okay, so the financial report for July, well, the revenue report for July. So I'm happy to report that loss receipts continue to increase, and through July, year to date through July, the loss receipts exceeded the, have exceeded the budget $674,135, and also exceeded the same period actual for prior year by $539,667. So that's, we have continued good news on the loss side. And on the splotch side, July was our final month of the collections 2014 splotch, so the collections we see at the end of this month will be for the new 2019 splotch. So this was, July was the 60th and final month of the 2014 splotch, and collections to date $50,456,138, which is 84.09 percent of the $60 million budget. Just as a secondary note, we were averaging about $841,000. But in the last 12 months, we've been averaging about $925,000. So splotch has been seeing an uptick, just the same as we've been seeing in the loss, so that's where the problem is.
Just like to thank everybody for coming, appreciate it. We're excited about the new budget, we're excited about cutting the military rate down again. Anyway, thank you all for coming. Thank, thank everyone for coming also on that. But on Saturday, July 20th, Caduce County and Caduce Red White Sharks hosted the Sea State Swimming Meet. It was held at Fort Olaford City Hall, this was the first time ever that we've been in Caduce County. But I want to give special thanks to the county and the city, and the volunteers who were swimming with it. with the Great Black Sharks. And another special thanks to Caitlin, that works in the department. She went and made presentation down in, from Mid-Georgia, I believe it was, back in the winter now, or actually last October, I think it was, but presented the program and was trying to get the VNC state, but this was just the first time it's always been down in Mid-Georgia. So had a great presentation, and I know she worked her, with the departments and the swim team and county manager, city manager also make this happen. Yvonne and Robert O'Connell, he's the president of the swim team, put great effort in, there was a lot of work into it, and then also my staff at, at the city. But everyone working just made this outstanding commitment. We have the GRBA state president, he was up, and all the members of the swim teams and all the travelers from South Georgia and everywhere. But since you got great comments through the facilities and the way everyone's set up, they, they did go above and beyond to get that done. So you know, a special shout out to Caitlin, and I appreciate her making this happen. It probably wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for her and all the effort you do.
I just want to say that, you know, this past week, we've seen everything that's happened in the country, and it just, it brings home a great replacement to here in Catoosa County. I want to thank Chief Camp, Sheriff Sis, all the men and women that work hard, day and night, to keep it going the same. And I'm just very appreciative of what you have to do.
I have one question. You're the place officer.
No, I'm not.
You're not the place officer. I just, yeah, we'll see if you can give a demonstration.
General, not that. General, not that.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm impressed, and thank y'all for coming out. I take this to y'all very seriously, and I, I think it's an opportunity to be here, up here, making decisions. I just want to thank, you know, our county workers, and all the, the whole, you know, menstruation, the whole people that do things behind the scenes. Our employees still doing the job on a day-to-day basis. You know, we, we're getting to be proud of it, it's camp. I give a lot of calls from people, sometimes they're complaining, but I get calls also that are good, because some of our county employees go beyond their, you know, their calling, and, you know, and they do, you know, they do best know, and, you know. I just want to thank, you know, the staff and all the, the board, you know, for believing in their employees and trying to make it better for, you know, the employees like the, the clinic and different things, you know. You know, pay's great, you know, when you get paid out on the job, it's great, but when you get benefits that, you know, really money, a lot of people don't see it, but they, you know, they're appreciative of it. And I, I'm very proud of having an opportunity to be, you know, department accountant, making decisions, and hopefully being recognized as employees. Thank you very much.
But this time we have to take care of everyone be safe. School starts next week. Watch kids start out of school buses, you've got young kids driving to school, and a divided school zone, you know, the lives matter, there are shooters, so let's, let's keep them safe. Might drive out of school zones, say that's a police officer, give everybody.
We have a planned, planned, we start leaving divided highways. This time we have to take a session with legal personnel department.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Sheriff Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
All in favor of coming out of the taking session to the House?
Aye.
We have no open session. Do I have any motion to approve? I make a motion. To the Attorney?
Second.
All in favor of the Attorney's to the House?
Aye.
All right, your turn.